Okay. All right. I'll follow the McHenry County zoning board of appeals meeting to order. Thank you for coming back. This hearing is a continuation of the September 17th, 2025 hearing. Today's hearing date, time, and location were announced on the record of the last hearing date of September 17th, 2025. Therefore, notice by publication, certified mail, and posting are not required for today's continuation. So when we left off, I believe we had continued in order to receive a tree survey from them, and we have received that. Would you like to go over that a little bit and tell us what you've done?
Yeah, sure. So Ben Dykema with ECA Solar.
I'm going to interrupt for just one moment. Excuse me. For the record, I'm on a credit spend. You should probably introduce yourself here.
Our names are right here. Okay.
For the hearing.
Okay, Bob, you go ahead first.
Robert Cozen, Algonquin Township.
Bill Curtick, Grafton Township.
Charlie Elgar, Richmond Township. And for the record, I'd like to say that while I was not present at the original hearing, I've read the transcript.
Vicki Gartner from Nunda Township.
Kirk Schnabel, Riley Township.
Jess Beverly, Door Township.
Okay, thank you.
Would you like us to introduce ourselves today?
For voice recognition, sure.
Okay. So Ben Dykema, I'm with ECA Solar.
Colin Walker, ECA Solar.
Sarah Skaronsky, Kennebourn.
All right. Yeah, so I'll give a quick introduction, and I'm going to turn it over to Sarah to kind of dive into the report a little bit better. But yeah, so obviously, at the last hearing, about a month and a half ago, you know, we went through a lot of the project details, and, you know, our understanding was the continuation was to produce this tree survey. Obviously, there was some discussion during the last hearing about, you know, what type of trees are proposed as being cleared, you know, quantities, that type of stuff. And, you know, as I understand it, you know, an effort to, you know, produce a tree survey so we know what we're looking at, and then also an attempt to, you know, mitigate, you know, with reducing it where we can and also proposing mitigation. So that's what we're here today to discuss. Obviously, with the tree report, you know, Sarah will talk through that, and then we can, I think, talk about some of the other stuff from there.
Okay, thank you.
So again, my name is Sarah Skaronsky of Kennebourn. I'm going to just kind of read over a brief thing that I prepared. I'm not very good at public speaking, but so I'm a certified arborist.
I swear, everybody, and I'm sorry, excuse me.
Well, I think everybody has been.
Sarah's new.
Sarah, you've been here before.
I've been here before. I was here in regard to the Pebble project.
Oh, you were here for a different hearing?
Yes.
Cindy, you were here?
Swear to me, please.
Cindy wasn't here for this hearing.
I have a hearing too.
Okay.
I have a hearing for this hearing.
All right. Let's do that, then. Okay. Please raise your right hand if you haven't been here, even if you have, that's fine. Okay. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony today?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
So, yes, I'm a certified arborist. I have more than eight years' experience doing tree surveys, and specifically, I obtained my ISA certification over four years ago, and that requires me to recertify every three years. So that, you know, speaks to the breadth of what my background is. I attend Illinois Arborists Association meetings, annual meetings every year to stay up to the current ANZI standards, the protocols, and emerging best practices in regards to tree surveys and the different kinds that are proposed for different purposes. For this project, the purpose of the survey was to both document the condition species and the relative contribution of these different tree species to the larger habitat of the woodland area that, and specifically, this tree survey was limited to those areas that were proposed for clearing. We did this with using standard industry protocols, ANZA 300, the ISA Tree Preservation Manual, along with the wide berth, you know, wide berth of other documents that are professionally recognized in producing these types of deliverables. The majority of the trees that were surveyed for this specific project, they were, most of them were of lower quality, disturbance tolerant species such as box elder, black walnut, black cherry, ones that are quickly establish themselves in disturbed areas, particularly along tree lines and property boundaries. We, in the survey, we did find a small portion of red oaks that were presumably planted, like a couple of them were planted back, you know, I would say 40 years ago by whoever the property owner was at that point along the eastern property boundary, or they were reseeded from the wetland and woodland areas to the east that are outside of the tree disturbance area. And the, but the vast majority of species that were encountered were of lower quality, less ecologically valuable species to the overall health of the project area. So the trees themselves were of mostly fair quality. There were not many notable species or notable individuals that, like, represented what we call specimen level trees. The vast majority, again, were in fair condition or poor condition, and that is a reflection of the disturbed type of area that they are relegated to being on the peripheries of the property edges. And so as, as the farther you get from the interior of the woodland, the more disturbance and more edge exposure that these trees are withstanding, and as a result, you see the more disturbed disturbance related type species that I previously reported on. I absolutely recognize and share the importance of protecting, you know, high value oak woodlands, manas, they are paramount concerns to McHenry County. I do not believe that what is being proposed to be removed could be considered as part of that habitat, again, with the dominance of these invasive tree type species. And, you know, in, just in context, the removal of these trees, while, yes, is of concern in this, to the board, the overall ecological value that the, that the solar array and the proposed vegetation underneath that solar array, I think, will overwhelmingly add to the ecological value that this property serves. You have native plant species that are going to help with groundwater retention, soil runoff or soil water runoff. It's going to increase habitat value for insects, birds, and all related animals that feed on those types of, that those types of critters. And so while there is tree removal proposed, the vast majority of the, well, the entire woodland to the east of the project area is to remain undisturbed. And so in that regard, the actual core woodland that would be of primary concern to the board is going to be preserved and maintained, and that it's the edge periphery trees that are of, that are of weedy species are the ones that are proposed to be removed. There were some questions in regards to what species are shown, and so in this exhibit, what you have is green, which means that it was of a lower quality species, not an oak or hickory. The yellow is an ocher hickory that is below a diameter of breast height of 12 inches, and anything that was 12 inches or greater that was an ocher hickory species that this board was of particular concern in regards to has been highlighted in red and called out with a specific tree ID. That tree ID can then be referenced in attachment A to determine what species it was, what the quality of that species or that tree individual was at the time of the survey, and the total diameter of breast height of said tree.
Thank you. You mentioned that the eastern edge trees, or is it the eastern edge? It's both sides. That they're poor quality and kind of invasive species because they're at the edge of the actual forest.
I wouldn't go as far as saying poor quality, but they are of lower quality, not of note to McHenry County, as referenced in a lot of the McHenry, like, the documents produced through the McHenry County Conservation District. Of the total 514 tree survey, I believe it was, I don't want to speak out of turn, so I'm going to double check my numbers, but of the 512 trees that were surveyed, only 12 of which were over that 12-inch diameter of breast height, which is the threshold at which oaks can be considered of old growth, and 32 of which were also oak and hickories, but were below that 12-inch D V H threshold. 468 out of the 512 were species that, with a vast majority of them being walnut, box elder, black cherry, that are not of species of concern to McHenry County and propagate themselves in areas of high disturbance, which is what you see on the fringes of the property and woodlands themselves.
Okay. But you did mention that because those trees were on the periphery along the forested area, that it affected them. Now, if you take those out, is that going to then jeopardize the existing trees that are left?
I would say.
Will they then become the edge of the forest?
It does, it does offer up an encroachment, I would say, but the, due to the sparse nature and the meaty nature of that area, the actual fringe habitat is much farther than the 50-foot buffer that is proposed to be cleared. So if, if it were, my determination, I would say, at least 100 feet from where the current tree line is, is what would be considered the edge or disturbed habitat.
Okay. When you remove the trees, are the roots and stumps removed as well?
No. So for the trees that were proposing along the east edge, those could be clean cut, and if the trumps, the stumps and the roots preserved.
Okay. So then the reason for taking those down is to allow more sunlight?
Yes. So that's exactly it. So, you know, you can see that the tree clearing goes a little bit beyond where the road is being proposed on the site. The purpose of that is for shading. You know, we, shading has a, for obvious reasons, has a very significant impact on solar projects, right?
I get that.
And especially when you have tree cover that's persistent, you know, that, that has a, yeah, I guess to put it bluntly, just a very significant impact on the production that we can do with the solar site.
Okay. I'm not going to ask any more questions. I'm going to pass it on to other board members. I know we all have questions. We'll start with Bob.
Thank you. I appreciate your, what I'll classify as an argument that the landscape is likely being changed from one type or style to another, meaning fringe woodland to prairie. Could you just go a little further in terms of the value or criteria that you may professionally be acquainted with between such landscapes?
Yeah. So currently, as the property exists, it is subject to constant tilling, constant soil disturbance, constant herbicide and pesticide use that's indicative of a crop, you know, a monoculture crop. When you install native vegetation, which includes both flowering and deep rooted perennial species, you increase the soil infiltration capacity, you decrease soil or water runoff, which is a paramount concern to McHenry County. You want that water to sit on the ground and percolate down into your water table. It provides water cleaning capacity that only native plants can really provide outside of native tree covers like oaks and hickories and other higher quality northern Illinois tree species. And in addition, you know, you're removing the use of all of these external chemicals that would otherwise be being applied to this landscape, and it also attracts a wide berth of insects and other types of, for lack of a better term, prey, for birds and other types of high value wildlife species or wildlife animals that the, then bring in those, all those different types of wildlife diversity that then utilize the forests to the east and to the west. And so ultimately, I firmly believe that this land use is better served under this circumstance than comparatively keeping the fringe habitat of the woodland, of those lower quality woodland species and transitioning it into a more native landscape.
And I'll just add on to that, too, just to quantify it. So this is about 30 acres of the farmland that would be converting into, to a metal light condition underneath the solar panels. And then some of the other measures that we're looking at, too, is we would be proposing an ag fence, fixed knot fence that has openings and larger openings towards the bottom that does help that critter flow, you know, going through.
May I continue?
Go right ahead.
If I have the acronym correctly, the ICAT or NCAT?
ECOCAT.
ECOCAT. Could you just re-quicken me with if there were any elements that were called out in this particular area that would complement the landscape that you're speaking to?
Yeah, if you just give me one moment, I'm going to pull up that document.
We had another consultant prepare that ECOCAT, so I just wanted to make sure that we have it for Sarah here.
Yeah. So just like a background on ECOCAT, the IDNR requests and the, this, this board requests that an ECOCAT be performed for any type of development in this regard. And so it will list any species that are state recognized as threatened or endangered that would be of concern for development in the proposed study area. And so the ones that were, so we have groundwater concerns that were recognized, which, again, I think I addressed with the, the switch over to a native vegetation, would increase the overall filtration and water quality capacity of groundwater percolation. Strength threatened, so you have the landing turtle and the rusty patch bumblebee. So again, the rusty patch bumblebee is threatened because we have so much crops in Illinois. It removes the habitat that this type of bee, like, specifically relies on. We would be reestablishing that vegetation cover. The landing turtles, those, through this process, we have to go through a consult, or I personally have not had to, but the environmental consultant needs to go through a consultation process with the IDNR to institute any best management practices when the development is occurring to ensure that there are no, what's called an incidental take act on the state threatened species. And so a lot of times, that is instituted through a plan that is directly handed to every contractor that is outside, onsite, that lists the different precautions that they need to take when they're making this, when they're constructing, constructing the development, as well as specific requirements to the types of fencing that you're going to use to ensure that there's easy traverse by the turtles from their wetland habitats to an upland habitat where they might forage or nest. And so that's what he was earlier referring to, wildlife friendly habitat, or wildlife friendly fencing with that six-inch gap from the, the top of the fence to the ground level to ensure that they can go and there is actual movement of that species so that they're not affected.
May I continue? Just on more of this engineering focus, I noticed the percentages, is it in that center area? You know who I am.
We got it.
And slope, is it really over, nearly eight and a half percent along the center line?
The center line of the road?
No, the center line of the subject property.
So I actually was out on the site driving there today, and, yeah, it is pretty, it's got rolling hills for sure. So eight and a half percent, I believe, is correct.
So surface water runoff moves on from eight to four to two is indicative of that type of characteristic shown on this plan?
Yeah, so the surface water flow would be going, you know, eight percent.
And then I'm curious, just to go a little further on the technology limitation with the shading. So if the panels were higher, they would be less impeded by the angle of the tree?
I guess very practically, yes, there would be obviously other concerns with raising the panels, and I think we're limited to 20 feet, if that's correct.
And then also in terms of the, are these panels bifacial?
Yes, they are.
Right. So there's still a contribution being made by the lower side, notwithstanding what is being impeded by the shading to the east?
To some extent, sure. I believe so.
And then, and then, ever recognizing efficiency, is there not proposals for a higher efficient panels that could overcome the current loss by the shading?
So we're getting a little bit outside of my expertise here, but the short of it is that there are, I mean, the industry does come out with more efficient panels all the time, right? You know, we, when we do a project, we, there's a certain procurement stage that we have to go through where we lock in the panels and, you know, as we've gone through, as I've been at ECA Solar, we have definitely been trying to get the higher wattage to the point where we can reduce our ground cover ratio. In this case, you know, we're, I believe we are locked in. Don't know if you recall the panel exactly, but. The 560s. So we actually have a pretty high efficient module that's locked in right now.
It doesn't get much more efficient than what we are proposing, and unfortunately, if there's no sun, we really can't increase the efficiency if there's no sun.
And then, given that we're looking at deciduous trees, why is that a concern in the middle of winter in terms of the proximity of the tree lines, is they will be leafless?
During the winter.
Right.
Right. Your highest production is in the summer, when it's fully, you know, all the leaves are out. But still, you still have, you know, all the sticks from the trees, the branches, that still does create a meaningful impact on the output of the project.
In my last, in terms of, more of a commercial issue then, would not the sale of electricity be greater when it is least able to be produced? And so you could market, like ICE, its value greater in the summer and less in the winter and offset your overall business cost?
This is outside of my realm as well. Do you have a great answer for this?
We do not control the price of electricity. It's, it's set by ComEd, and so ComEd comes out with their established rate, and we basically sell that power at 10% less. So I'd love to sell it for more and less at certain times and, you know, achieve those results, but unfortunately, it's ComEd, and the whole point of Community Solar is to just be 10 to 15% cheaper than ComEd.
And I'm sorry, there's a notation of a permanent easement, and maybe this is something I've forgotten to cover off of Route 14. To whom is that easement, why is it permanent?
I believe you're referring to, if it's on the western side.
Yes, sir.
A and R's pipeline. So they have a 50-foot easement, which is also why our array is situated as such that it is. You know, we're trying to be as far away from, you know, these neighbors on the west as possible. We also have to contend with this 50-foot easement, and so we're also trying not to get too far into the eastern side of the trees, so we're trying to walk a fine line here.
And since you mentioned the deliverable company, that array is being mandated by Commonwealth Edison and not a design by you.
Sorry?
Proposed utility own electrical poles, you show six poles.
Yes.
Visual from.
ComEd's preferred interconnection method is above ground, and so they have three poles, and we have three poles. There's protection equipment on both sides that, you know, protect our array, protect ComEd, protect their electric circuits.
Not to be argumentative about your word preferred, I think there's, they're mandated style.
Yeah.
For those poles. I have no further questions, and thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Bill?
Sarah, your comment and view about, as I understand it, that as a result of the planting of the native plants, the ecological quality of the site will be improved.
In my personal opinion and professional.
The problem I have is looking at our standards. F, which is what I think addresses the, paragraph F, which addresses the, provide the ecological benefit, is separate from E, which addresses the issue of impact to woodlands. So I don't think, and as far as I'm aware, I don't know that these factors in site design A through K involve a balancing. If they involve a balancing of one against the other, I could understand that ecological improvement, if it was great, could offset impact to woodlands, but this is not a balancing, and E requires that the property, the facility be situated so as to minimize impacts of woodlands. Now, if we could have the, I'm having difficulty seeing that.
The exhibit, the exhibit might be easier.
What you had in your report, I think it's easier for me to look at. You can go down to the next page, please. All the way at the bottom there, at the far south end of the site, is that area which in, at the far south end, where those trees are going to be removed. I see that there's probably, I think, 11 oak trees, 10 or 11 oak trees in that rectangular area that are going to be removed. Why do those need to be removed? Because looking at the site plan, if you look at your site plan, there's not a lot going on around there, and if you could have the site plan called up, please? Yeah, there, I mean, I'm having difficulty overlaying the site plan with your tree survey, so I can't tell what's going on and what's being impacted. But is it necessary to move, to remove all of those trees on the south end?
Sure. So same as on the east side, the reason for the tree removal is shading. Now, we are in the northern hemisphere, so the sun, you know, is always, you know, always comes in from the south, you know, as it rises. So the most impactful shading is anything that's to the south. To the east and the west, there's a little bit less of a shading concern, and if we have trees to the north of the site, which we don't in this case, there's actually no shading concern.
In your, somebody's testimony last September, they said that the, what's identified as a wetland there on the upper right-hand side is not a wetland, but is a historical flooded area? That was testimony at page nine of the transcript.
Sure, yeah. I believe that's correct.
What about that area in the far southwest corner? And why can't array, instead of the, that one array in the southeast corner being so long, why can't it be cut in half, and the half that's cut off moved around? You understand what I'm saying?
I believe so. So you're talking about the blue.
What I'll call there, that finger that's right there where the pointer is?
Yep.
Instead of it being that long, why can't it be cut half the length? And then whatever panels you lose are put to the west of it there where the pointer is going?
Yeah. So, well, I'll start by saying this is something we could look into, okay? And, and I think we could take a closer look. The immediate reason that we avoided that area is because it is low lying, and we assume that it's going to pool up with water, and we're trying to avoid going into that water. That, I know that blue area that's shown on there, I believe that came from the McHenry County website. It doesn't quite represent what we found to be the full low lying area, so the extents are a little bit different, so it does look like we can get closer to that blue area. You know, I think as we get into more detailed design, we could look into something. We're trying to limit that.
Well, if that's wet, then that just means, doesn't that just mean a different type of? of foundation for the supports, instead of them being pile driven, put in concrete, or something else?
It's less of a foundation concern, it's more of a, you know, if we put it in a three-foot hole that fills up three feet of water, now we're potentially drowning out the solar panels themselves, and that's the concern that we would have with that low lying area. If you get a large storm event, um, you know, not all the water inundates immediately and you have pooling and pounding, um, that specific area, I think we found is, I want to say five to six feet before it would overflow and move on, um, so we just got to make sure that we're not putting it in an area where the water rises so high that it actually hits the electrical equipment.
And when it rotates...
When the ro...
When it rotates, it's only three feet, three feet of clearance, more or less.
Okay, and how high are they, I mean, how high are they, when they're rotated, what generally is the clearance to the ground, it's not just three feet, is it?
When, when, when it faces towards west, when it's, yeah, when it's facing west, when the sun's over there, it dips down like this, um, it's three foot, three foot clearance, same when it's in the morning, facing the east with the sun, it's a three foot clearance.
Okay, so, um, if that's a low, I just don't understand, if that's a low area, the clearance there would be more than three feet?
Uh, no, the three foot is, regardless of what the elevation is, we have three foot of ground clearance from the ground to the edge of the solar panel.
And it goes up and down the different...
Yes.
Yeah, it's terrain following.
Okay, I understand. Um, then my other question is, if some of that can be moved, why can't you selectively cut down trees and leave the 11 hickories or oaks that are there?
Yeah, so, like I said, I think, I think my offer to you is that we can look into this, and we can, we can work to try to see if we can move those over, I think the immediate concern is flooding, I think it would require us to take a, a closer look at that, a more detailed look, um, to see if we can move, you know, I, I don't know if we can move all of them, but we can certainly try to move, see if we can do different size trackers. Um, another concern too is, and, um, you know, is, there are set lengths that we have to use, so it's not like we can just reduce it by three foot, 10 by 20 foot, um, you know, so that's another thing that we could look into.
And, um, addressing the road, the road is a gravel road?
Correct.
So that's why you just cut the trees down to the ground, instead of removing the stumps?
Correct.
That I understood you to be saying.
Yeah, so, I'm trying to recall, I, I believe...
Let me, here's my question.
Sure, yeah.
Can the road zigzag around some trees?
Uh, it, it depends on our site access, so I, I don't, you know, the landlord is limiting us to how much we're leasing from them, if we're zigzagging and we're pushing out, we're going outside of our lease boundary.
Well, it would seem, it would seem to me if the landlord wants money, he may, he may want, he may allow a little zig.
I think that's also something we can work, work on, am I understanding correctly that you'd like us to zig and zag around the oaks?
That's what I'm thinking, and if we could have, because there's one area there where there's, there, it looks like there's maybe 20 in one area or 15 in one area that are all together, we could have, uh, the, um, the survey, please?
Take that down.
No, they have, that was the exhibit to their, their analysis, yeah, that one there. If you could go down a little bit, please? I'm sorry, both of us. Too far.
North.
Okay, um, yeah, a little bit further north. A bit more?
Sure.
Yeah, I thought there's one area there where there were, there was a lot of yellow and red in one spot.
I think it was on the next one. Right, right, 324, 198.
Right, that area there. Just wondering if you can zig or zag.
That, I, I still think that we would have shading issues, but we, we can look into that.
And, um, how come nothing is happening in that, um, up on what, what I'll call the northeast corner of the property that you're leasing, you've got this rip, long rip, yeah, north of the, um, what is not a wetland stop, yeah, up in there.
The, the top right corner right there with the bounces?
Yeah, you're not...
That's not our parcel, and the landlord did not wish to lease that part to us.
Okay, and then how about just south of there? Um, that, you're not going to do anything there because it involves taking down all those trees?
Right, we're trying, we've, honestly, we are trying to avoid cutting down trees by not going farther into the east.
I understand. Um, since we have to look at the, um, in my view as one member of the board, the overall impact, what's going on as far as, um, the not, the possible potential, or the actual number of oaks and hickory in that portion of the property, um, where the array is not sitting, where we see all of that, well, I'll characterize as woodland, can we assume that there's the same density of hickory and oak amongst those other scrub trees, I'll call them, as there are in the area that you're cutting down? I mean, is there, is there going to be a lot of oaks and hickory still left here?
Yes, and other, so we did survey into that area, it became cost prohibitive very quickly, um, and, uh, the farther east that we went, the, um, I wouldn't say that the relative densities increased, but the overall health of those trees did increase, speaking to the edge habitat type, um, that reduces the quality and the, um, the condition of the oak and hickory that are present on that eastern boundary of, that where the tree clearing is proposed, and the western edge of the, of the woodland area, um, ultimately, the, the ones, the one tree that was notable, uh, I think it was 476, which was a little bit lower to the south, or, or...
456.
456, yes. Um, that tree, in, in what I could, from my own professional opinion, that was probably like a property tree that was, that was planted by the then property owner, um, and that is where a lot of the younger saplings of the oaks that are, you know, between the size class of three and six inch D V H came from, um, and so, if there was a tree that was, you know, of notable class that I, when I was doing the survey, I was like, wow, that's a, you know, that's a nice tree, that was the one that came of, came to mind, and the farther east that you go into that woodland, um, there were, uh, the size class did increase comparatively to those edge oaks that were present.
They were, um...
So, like the...
Better trees?
They were ecologically valuable, yes.
Okay, that's a professional way to say it. That's also...
I, I like, I think all trees are good.
And you said that a few of the trees, I don't recall the number, that are on the, um, western edge of the woodland, I'll call it, some were apparently planted, others were just there by nature?
I, yeah, so you have, yeah, what is called like a landscape tree, which is one that was planted intentionally by a landowner, um, and then you have volunteer trees, which, um, presumably were generated from that original, what I call mother tree.
Okay, so, but we would have oaks and hickory in what I'll call that woodland?
We do have that present.
And those that would, you would expect to see nature taking care and growing the oaks in...
Yeah, nature will always have this way.
Okay. I have nothing further.
Thank you. Charlie?
Uh, yeah, just a couple of questions. Uh, you testified that at the extremes, it'd be three feet off the ground, when it's flat, how far off the ground is it?
Probably closer to five or six feet, pending final engineering.
Uh, and, uh, technically, I would presume there is a way, if there was lots of water present, to prevent those panels or that area of panels to refrain from tilting until the water runs somewhere.
So, there is, it's called a flood sensor that can be put on there, that does, um, as long as it functions, I've heard mixed reviews, um, but it's supposedly supposed to sense, and then it will tell the tracker to stow...
And, and you're monitoring, uh, the site or any site in real time anyhow, so if something went wrong, you have the capacity to stop anything?
The only contradiction, um, that I do want to point out is that very typically, large rain events happen coinci, uh, with large wind events, um, and for, when a tracker is at flat, that's its worst position for a wind loading. Um, so what I've actually seen in, in systems where they've done flood sensors is there's two competing situations where they, yes, you want it tipped up to get out of the water, but then you also want it angled so that it doesn't turn into a sail, um, and so that, that's where there's concerns with that approach, I'll say.
Have you ever had a, an array that flew away because of a wind event?
I, I have not, no, but...
Are you aware of any?
I am not, but there could be damage. I am aware of damage from wind, um, on sites.
Well, and hail, and lightning, and whatever.
Absolutely, but try to limit it when we can.
Um, has a calculation been done, uh, as to how much capacity you would lose if these trees are not removed?
Um, there's been some analysis on production loss, I don't know the exact numbers though.
Can you give me an approximate number?
I cannot, no, I, I, it's a different team.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, if I may, just a couple of findings.
Okay.
Um, just getting to the height then of the solar panels in that lower area that we were discussing before, is there anything from a engineering perspective that says that you have to follow the contour there in that immediately low area, as opposed to maintaining the height at the same elevation as say the, um, the array that's immediately adjacent to that low area?
You, you're talking about filling it in?
Yeah, so I'm not necessarily filling it in, but...
Having longer piles.
Oh, longer piles, yeah, having longer piles. Um, so, longer piles, very, the longer the pile sticks up, the further it's got to go down, right?
I understand, okay.
So, it, it becomes incredibly cost prohibitive very quickly, um, because you also need very large equipment to drive deeper piles. Well, what if you had, what if the piles aren't driven, what if in that area they're concrete or, because, I mean, there's other, there's other supports other than driving the piles, right, in certain areas?
There, there are, um...
I mean, there's concrete, for example.
Yeah, we definitely try to stay away from concrete.
I know you do, but there are, there are other areas where you wouldn't have to drive a pile down where it would be cost prohibitive.
Yeah, well, what I will say too is, is, in, in my experience in, before working at ECA, I used to do design work for the large utility scale projects as well, um, you know, I have seen it where we have looked at increasing pile length, but usually you have about a foot that you can before it becomes, um, I, I think even out of spec with racking manufacturers and stuff like that, so, um, and one more concern too with that is that we, we do need to think about operation and maintenance, and, um, you know, they need to be reachable, um, you know, so if you imagine somebody standing on the ground, trying to do repairs and, and it's, you know, call it eight feet high, um, that, that becomes very difficult and can be unsafe as well.
Or wearing hip boots.
What's that?
Or, or wearing hip boots in the area.
Yeah, something.
And if, if I may, also, the, the concrete in the low lying area, which is probably going to be at the wetland, um, or some variation thereof, that's, that's of concern from the wetland perspective, um, it has a much more higher associated impact to the function.
I'm only addressing that low area?
Yep.
If it is not a wetland.
Bill, it's also prohibited under the stormwater management ordinance, they can't use concrete unless it's for the gate.
Okay, then I have nothing further.
Kurt. I would like to yield my time to member Beverley.
Thanks, Kurt.
You save the best for last.
I, I have a lot of questions. Um, I want to clarify your testimony about your opinion regarding the prairie vegetation. Is that testimony based on a calculus that prairie is better than row crops, or is it based on a calculus that prairie plus woods and a smaller array would be better than current row cropped land? Can you... Or, excuse me, I maybe wasn't clear, I, I want you to clarify your opinion that taking these trees out and putting solar there instead is better, is that opinion based on taking these trees out and having it, yeah, excuse me, leaving the trees in and having it be row cropped, the trees are in poor condition? If we left the trees in and eliminated the row cropping by restoring prairie, does your opinion change?
Without the solar array?
With the solar array, smaller, leaving the trees?
Um, so, without speaking to the technicalities of what that does to the overall production of the array, um, I, I think that without the, um, certain flexibility of removing these edge habitat forested areas, and the compensated benefit of the transition of the land as proposed through a solar array, would have a higher ecological value than just those trees remaining in a remaining row crop area.
If it was, the array was reduced and the prairie was put in, would it be worth preserving the trees? These trees are, I, you characterize the trees as invasive, these two, these species that you've identified are all native, and you didn't address the buckthorn and the honeysuckle and, and all the other bad stuff I'm sure is in there.
Correct.
But, there, these 512 trees you identified are in fact native trees and not invasive.
Um, I would argue that not all, like, so, let me pull up the memo.
Maybe the spruce?
So, of the 512 that were surveyed, the, of the spe, of the species that are of concern to McHenry County, which are oaks, hickories, and then I also included within that elms, um, because that was the only other species that, like, otherwise I would also include, like sycamore and other types of old growth trees that have like a large, um, root uptake, uh, capacity, like water uptake capacity, um, the ecological value that's presented by large old growth trees, all the others are, um, the vast majority being black cherry, box elder, and, um, walnut, and so, these, all, all three of those species, while they do serve to an overall woodland habitat, they're, they're, they're known to be disturbed area trees. If this was an old growth, uh, oak woodland with, you know, 60% of the canopy being dominated by such species, I would have a much different answer, but with 90% of the canopy, and, you know, obviously without doing a diligent canopy analysis, but with roughly 80 to 90% of the canopy being taken up by these trees, which then outshave the slower growing oaks, I think you are going to have an overall takeover of the elbside, and, and invasive is a loose term, um, you can have a native tree that's invasive, um, it, it would be calling it non-native with, because like goldenrod's considered invasive, but it's still a native species, and so, um, box elder, black cherry, um, in lots of instances walnut, um, they're all considered invasive to our oak woodland savannas, and so, that is where I kind of make that statement in regard to what's the overall benefit, um, when you remove these edge habitats, and, um, you do create, like, to your point, you create a new edge, um, that then can encroach, you know, further into the overall, that, you know, the, the woodland to the east. The, the species that are present, hopefully, are the ones that are going, like, which, like I was saying, as you move farther to the east, you do see an increase in overall sizes of those oaks, and, um, out, like, and actually, there was quite a few elms that were regenerating in that area, um, the, that is where I see, like, the overall detriment to the overall positive, um, where you have now what was, uh, dominated by buckthorn and honeysuckle, which we obviously didn't survey for apparent reasons, um, when you then establish a, uh, native vegetation underneath there, it often can resist that encroachment from those invasive species as well. So I think it can lend itself to improving the overall edge... So I think it can lend itself to improving the overall edge habitat that then would be extended as a result of the tree.
So it's, is your testimony that removing these trees is essential to the management of this forest?
No.
Is, because that's, you're saying that these species are invasive and that they should be removed in favor of putting in prairie habitat? But that's where the road goes. So I'm confused.
So it's a 50-foot swath, the road is 20 feet. Everything else that's outside of that road will be native vegetation.
Okay. But you're not saying that these trees should be removed as a means?
Best management practice, no, that is not what I'm saying.
Okay, and I know that you're relying on the McHenry County Conservation District report, but in the NRI report, they did address the importance of avoiding impacts to woodlands. Did you want to look at that? So will you talk about it a little bit? I understand that it's important to focus on old growth oaks, hickories and sycamores, but this is a lot of trees. And the NRI report did address that we should avoid impacts to the woodlands, period, and did not identify what type of woodlands that would be.
So the, my memo was informed based off of, you know, prior tree surveys being asked for by the board. And the, the biggest concern was in, in those instances where the oak savanna habitats that are present and of primary concern to McHenry County. I agree that, you know, preserving our woodland areas are important. I have, I don't know where the. Usually take photos of notable trees.
And while this edulin habitat may not be the most desirable trees, does it offer ecological benefit to the rest of the forest overall? Such as cavity nesting habitats?
Sorry, I just wanted.
Oh, no, that's fine.
Do you have the, the specific page number in reference for that?
11 and 12. The NRI, thank you.
Yeah, so native woodlands seem to be the highest or the most referenced in that section. And I would argue what's present on the edge is not a native woodland. It was originally a property line that was planted. And like I was referencing with the older red oak that was of notable appearance, it was very, so like when a tree grows, they have different types of canopies. And so it was very wide and open, which leads me to believe that as it was developing, there was nothing around it. And so through time, that, that, that edge habitat that was probably planted to mark a, you know, a property boundary, got filled in with a bunch of what I like, what I refer to as invasive native species, cherry, walnut, mulberry, box elder. And then underneath that, you have your buckthorn and your honeysuckle that are just demolishing any native woodland ephemerals or ground lined species. And so ultimately, the native woodlands, the reason why they're so important is that in their pre-existing, pre-development state, they were hosting a whole large, there was, there was multiple canopy zones that were then occupied by a variety of different species that ultimately lent itself to the larger ecology of the area. And what is present now is not what I would consider a native woodland. It is a, it is an edge habitat resulting from a, from a property planting. And the area to, the farther east you get, clearly, the more, that is where you start getting a native, what I would call a native woodland, that's unmanaged. And so now you have all of these weedy or species that are growing a lot faster than the oaks and hickories and elms that then outcompete the, the existing trees that we're hoping to keep and overall degrades the woodland in its entirety. So while what they're referencing to here as native woodlands and existing mature trees, the, the native woodland species would be those oak, hickory, sycamore, elm, all, and, and, you know, there's, without having a whole list in front of me, that is what is of paramount concern in preserving. But the, the invasive, lower quality native species, those are present in areas where they have been left to degradation and ultimately aren't, with, if, if unmanaged, that whole area would probably just become, you know, mulberry and box elder. If that answers your question.
It gets there. So in your, in your opinion, it's not a calculus of whether reducing the size of the array, which we have no testimony would interfere with the viability of the project, right? So perfect world, if they just made it smaller, would it be worth keeping the trees or would it be a regular part of forest management in this case to clear that portion?
Can I, just real quick, I want to throw another option out there, if you guys are open to this. You know, one of the questions that was asked of us at the first hearing was, you know, proposed mitigation. And one thing that we've talked about that I think we would like to consult with you guys is proposing some reforestation in this area.
I'm not ready for that. I'd like her to answer the question first.
Okay, all right, I just.
We can talk about it, but that means that this case isn't ready for a voting meeting. So that would be your calculus there. But I'd like her to answer the question.
Can you?
Sure. If this site plan were smaller and those trees could be avoided, should they be avoided?
Yeah, if it was feasible for the project.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Anything else to say?
I have a lot of questions on the different habitat that are provided by the trees. I think that your testimony is that, yes, they're valuable and they do provide habitat, while they may not be in the greatest of conditions simply because of where they're located, correct?
Yes.
They, they are still valuable resource to the overall health of the.
All trees are good.
All trees are good, okay, yeah, that's, that's all I needed. That saved me a lot of back and forth, thank you.
Kurt, you have one more?
I do. Thank you, member Beverley. I am a bit concerned when I hear about this cutting down and leaving the stumps, and I'll, I'll tell you why. You yourself say, you know, a lot of these trees are basically junk trees, mulberry, you know, honeysuckle are trees, but walnut, whatever. Whenever I cut them down in my yard, they resprout right back up unless I put stump killer on them. What is your plan to control them after they're cut?
Sure, yeah, and, so we, we will be having a landscape crew on site, you know, during the summer months. And most, most of the measures that we plan on doing are mechanical, so mowing, you know, obviously over stumps, that's a little bit difficult. I, you know, to the best that we can, we want to avoid using chemicals, so if there's a mechanical way that we can do it, sometimes they, you know, they, they may grind the stumps down, but leave the roots in, and then that allows them to, you know, go over there with, with equipment. You know, I, I guess I'm throwing out options here, but, you know, the short answer is, yeah.
I would like, if we discuss this further, more clarification on we might do this or we might do that. I'd like to know what you're going to do, please.
To that point, do you have IDOT access? Is this a, is this a roughly finalized site plan? Because we've had a lot of testimony about, well, you know, we'll work with it and we'll move this, but like it's our job to approve a mostly final site plan. The final, like, the building permitting stage is substantial compliance with this site plan. So if you're going to move the driveway or if you're going to move this whole lower portion, like, we're supposed to approve that here.
Sure. The, the long story short is we are still working with IDOT on this access. We're, we're hoping that we can keep that entrance, but we don't have that final yet. And we fully understand that if we do have to change that entrance location, we'll be back. But our hope is that we can keep it.
Okay, there were more questions down the side?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just, north, south, east and west. Again, the, the tail that seems to be wagging the dog on the southern end, is this correct illustration of its six rows?
On the site plan?
Yes.
A very southern portion?
Yes.
I believe so. I think they're.
I think I know seven.
Seven rows?
Yeah.
And that contains about how many panels per row then? Because I, mine doesn't contain a table in order. Because it also looks illustratively shorter already than the existing group moving from south to north.
About 72 panels per row.
So out of the thousands that are there, we're probably talking about doing about 135.
Bad math, it'd be double because they're, they're too, we're trailing too much. So 142.
142 panels. And then who else is talking about 500 trees? Well, I'm sorry, I mumbled to say, and who else is talking about 500 trees?
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Any more questions from the board? Okay, now, did I understand that you would have more testimony from Dan, is it? Is that, what's your name?
From Colin.
Oh, Ben?
That's Ben.
I'm Ben.
Okay, and you're?
I'm Colin.
Colin, okay. Did you have more testimony to give today or no? Okay.
No, I thought we were just talking about the tree study and.
Yeah, we were, but I thought that Ben said that you would have more to say.
Oh, I, I was just thrown out and, and, not at the right time, it seems, that, you know, what we would be open for a mitigation strategy is reforestation.
Okay, all right. We have one member of the audience today, Cindy, did you have any questions?
Yes, I do.
Okay, introduce yourself and give your address, please.
Do you mind if I sit down just because?
Oh, why?
You'd be better to ask my questions. So my name is Cindy Skircrude. I live at 4209 West Solon Road in Solon Mills. I'm the chair of the Environment Defenders of McHenry County's Water and Natural Resources Protection Action Team. I know I only have three minutes, so I'm going to ask all my questions first and then just turn it over to you.
You're the only one, so you can take a little more time.
Okay. So first, will a savanna seed mix be used under the panels? I ask this because the Oaks of McHenry County report shows that this parcel, which is in the southeastmost section of Heartland Township, was all woodland historically. So would savanna species do better here than prairie species since this parcel is woodland soils? That's question one. Are there plans to remove invasive species, including kind of weedy trees, from the remaining woodland to the east on the site to improve the habitat there? For example, you know, thinning the trees and, and sowing a savanna seed mix under them. Why does this figure, figure 1.2, tree clearing map, show 100-foot wide swath of trees to be cut along the eastern edge of the proposed array when there's only a 20-foot access road proposed? What is the width you're proposing to cut trees to prevent shading of the array? This is a question you don't have to answer now, but I appreciate knowing later. What are the IDs of the oaks and hickories less than 12 DBH that are to be removed with the destruction of this, this center area that runs east-west through the, through the field property? Why did the tree ID numbers change from the 1023 report to the 1028 report? I reviewed the 2023 report, so I'm a little behind on what's in the 2028 report. I couldn't, didn't have time this morning to review it. What happened to tree 500 from the 1023 report? A red oak of this size, it was listed as 125 DBH, no matter its condition, is exceedingly rare. How old is tree 456 with its 33 DBH? Nowhere in the report does it detail the criteria for rating the condition of the trees. What are the factors that are considered?
Those are my questions.
Sure. So the reason why the numbers changed was because we added an extra foot of buffer area to capture any edge trees that might be, that weren't captured previously. So that's where the tree survey went from 500 to 512 trees to be more thorough for the purposes of the board. Tree 500 that was listed at 125 DBH, that was an error in, a data entry error, it was 12 inches. Then the five got tacked on in the field and it did not get caught in the QC process. The, the four, the, whatever the ID number was of the 36-inch DBH oak, we can't specify how old that is because without cutting the tree down, we don't have that information. If it were up to my professional opinion, I would say anywhere from 60 to 80 years old. Again, conditions of the time that it was established can really play a large part into how large and how quickly it gets to that size. Based on, off the canopy structure, it was definitely planted, you know, in an open area at, at the time of it was establishing. So I would say it's probably, it's not as indicative of like a really old oak that would have a very straight canopy associated with a forested habitat at the time that it's established. So without, you know, cutting it, I couldn't provide that answer. Will a savanna seed mix be used? That is, you know, normally these types of questions aren't really ironed out until farther into the process when we're engaging with the landscape team or the, the subject company is. That is definitely something that can be taken into consideration. The soils, yes, I would say are of the condition where a savanna seed mix would probably be more appropriate. And also the benefits of this savanna seed mix is that it's lower growing. So that's something that is definitely can be engaged with the project. The east swath, it's not 100 feet, it's 50 feet. On my PDF tool, when I, the one inch equals 250 feet. And on my PDF tool, when I did it right before we got to the hearing and I measured it, it was anywhere from 50 to 60 feet. So I'm not quite sure where the 100.
It's from using your legend.
Yeah, so.
So the legend here, you know, this is 100 feet, based on this legend?
So that, based off of that legend in my PDF viewer, and it, it came out that like this, from pink to pink, that's roughly half of this, not this full 0 to 125.
I'm just going to say for the record that whatever you're talking about, we can't see or understand.
I understand.
The scale on, on the, on our PDF, that if, if, I use blue beam. So we have a measure tool based off of setting the scale associated with the PDF. And I ran it before we came here and along that eastern edge, it was anywhere from 50 to 62 feet.
So what you're saying is it's not 100 feet?
Correct.
It's 50 to 60 feet?
Correct.
Thank you.
And then to get to your other question, what are the IDs of, well, if you could scroll up farther to that east-west portion, yes. There were no other oaks or hickories that were less than 12 inches in that area. Everything is green other than those couple of red. So we have one, two, three red and everything else is green.
Okay.
All the other.
I may be looking at an earlier version.
If there were oaks or hickories present in that east to west swath, they would be labeled with the yellow points and there are no other yellow points, it's just green points.
Okay, that changed between the 1023 report and the 1028 report.
That's 1023.
Perhaps the label is obscuring my view. I think it just might be a misinterpretation of color.
This is why it was hard to go from one report to the other when the ID numbers had completely changed.
Yeah, every other tree within that swath is either a cherry or a mulberry. We have one walnut.
Okay, well, I see that there isn't one here on the 1028 report.
And regardless, if we refer to Attachment A, we can see every single tree that was identified on site with their associated tree ID, and if you have any specific questions regarding specific trees, I can easily answer to that. But even if it's not specifically labeled in the use of it, which it quickly would become very overwhelming to try and understand where labels are going if every single tree was labeled, we have the associated information for every tree that was surveyed in Attachment A.
Okay. Yeah, I was just, I wasn't asking for every tree, it was just all the oaks and hickories.
And then as far as plans to manage the woodland to the east, that is out of my wheelhouse, but-
We're off the project at that point. You know, that's the other landowner's prerogative.
It's a different landowner than-
It's the same landowner, but he's not based in that area to us. He's reserving it for other reasons.
And what about the factors by which you evaluate the condition of the trees?
So I kind of opened with that. As an arborist, we have dozens of different manuals that we adhere to, but the main one is ANZI A300, which outlines tree risk assessment and tree condition. It's an industry standard.
So can you just kind of describe for me the factors that go into it?
So it would be the structure of the tree, the disease or fungal issues that could be present through pox, or leaf spot, or other things of that nature. But the biggest one is structure, and any attributed limb damage or limb death associated with that tree. The other less, lesser ones are the position in its habitat and how it's doing in it, as well as its value and specimen level for the species that it is. So for each species, there are different categories of what's considered a specimen-level tree, and so that's where a lot of that is informed, just through years of looking at them.
So do you evaluate trees differently, depending if they're in a natural setting versus trees that people have in their landscape?
A hundred percent, yes.
So how were these, which set of criteria would you use to evaluate these trees?
Natural areas. And so that, and when you're estimating the valuation of trees in natural areas, it's usually a quantity of where's the location, so is it in the heart of the woodland, or is it in edge habitat? The condition of the tree, just based off of what I was previously mentioning, the type of species that it is, and the overall size of that tree, and then what the market replacement value for said species is, all of those get factored into a calculation, and then that is what is used to determine what the actual dollar amount is typically associated with a specific tree.
So how do you do a market evaluation? I did an evaluation based on information that I'd asked people about, and they said you value trees at five hundred dollars per inch for trees that are fifteen inches or greater DBH, and two hundred and fifty dollars per inch for trees that are less than fifteen inches DBH, and based on the 2023 report, I calculated the value of oaks and hickories to be removed was a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars.
Without knowing what sources they're using that from, and, you know, typically, that's a very high estimation, in my experience, and that would be relegated more for like landscaping trees that are serving more than just native community, you know, purposes. That's like, that would be an estimation of, you know, flood control, shade, and, you know, cooling effect, and, you know, with very small regard to its overall contribution to the larger native habitat. That estimation seems to be high and more suited towards landscaped, specifically planted trees, not volunteers.
Do you have an alternative value to use?
There are two different methods. My computer just died, but one of them, I can, you know, I only got your comments back this morning, so it was a little difficult to be able to be able to come up with an immediate response. But in my experience with people that I've worked with that have been court, who have been like, I forget what the term is, like a credible witness, or-
Forensic.
What was it?
Forensic experts?
Yeah, like the professional expert for testimony, people who testify on behalf of a professional opinion.
That would be an expert opinion.
Expert witness.
Yes, thank you.
Expert witness. The method that is most typically used is a combination of those five factors that I specified earlier. Each gets evaluated on a scale of zero to one, and then each, you know, is informed by the professional opinion of the arborist, and then each of those factors then gets times out by the actual market value of that species of tree.
And Cindy, not to interrupt, but I'm not sure that the value of the trees is something that we can consider in our vote.
Are we going to do staff questions, too? Sorry, excuse me. We're going to let staff have questions, too, right? And we can ask staff questions?
Yeah, I just inquired, and that's what MCCD is using for reporting to McDOT for the value of trees that they're proposing potentially to have to remove for a bridge work.
We don't have that type of process in place here for ours.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any questions from staff?
Just one question, just on the far, the northeast portion there, where tree removal is proposed. It does look a little bit thin on the east side of that tree removal strip there. If that were an issue where you wouldn't have any dense vegetation, since that does appear to be probably within five hundred feet of the roadway, could that be adjusted to leave some of that, or put in additional vegetation, you know, I'm talking about?
We're talking about between here?
Like right along here? Because if this is removed here, just outside of that, it looks like it might not be sufficient screening from the right-of-way, within five hundred feet.
Yeah, I think that's something we could look into and have a discussion with the landowner if it's outside of our area.
Okay.
If that's a concern.
Okay. I think that's the only question.
Okay, thank you.
I have questions for staff.
Okay.
Kim, has the county ZBA ever been in a position to negotiate a quick pro quo mitigation strategy with a proposed developer?
I don't believe so.
Has the county board ever negotiated incentives with a potential ZBA proposal?
No, not aware.
So this is a thumbs up or a thumbs down process?
Yes.
Thank you.
I understood you led with the reference document of the ANZI A300. Did you also, which is, in my opinion, which is more of a nursery focus, in terms of issues, did you look at IDNR standards for natural area features?
Yes, and so IDOT actually only requires, so IDOT follows IDNR procedures. They only require survey for four inches and above. We over-captured, we went at three inches. Also, any non-native species encountered also isn't asked to be surveyed. ANZI A300, though, I think it's part six. I don't have like the actual number in front of me, it's on my computer, but that is what guides most tree inventories within the arboricultural, like, arboricultural community. So they will, while it is relegated mostly to tree risk assessment, there are also specifications in regards to assessing tree condition. In supplement of that, I also follow ISA tree standards, so International Society of Arbor Culture. They also have a technical guidance memo with an associated worksheet, depending on how thorough you're going to be in your review, that is used to inform how we're assessing.
And those references were included in your inquiry, I must have-
No, no. So it, like, this is such a, there's so many resources that, like, to list them all, it would be prohibitive. I could have included those two main documents. But as an arborist, that, those, like, the ANZI A300 is our bible. And so that's just, and from my, like, from my, you know, obviously from the professional experience, I just automatically inferred that that's what we're using as an arborist, but I should have presented that exact information in the memo.
Especially given the age of the state natural areas inventory is something that some of us remember in the early days of walking out of those canopies. So thank you for the time.
Thanks. Okay. Well, did you have any closing statement, or are you all talked out now?
Pretty dry.
Okay, in that case, there's, is there seven of us? There's only six of us. You can continue again, if you wish, to wait for the seven board members, or we can vote today.
I think we would like to continue. There were questions that we feel that we should be more strict on answering.
Okay.
So we'd like to come back with those specific recommendations.
Okay.
We need a date.
I disappeared, I was-
I can tell you that November is pretty close.
Yeah.
Yeah, no more November.
Yeah.
Something else.
If it is just for a vote, you know, and it's something that's quick, we could potentially put it on with-
Well, it sounds like they're going to bring us some more information, so I think we should give it a little time.
So it appears that Wednesday, December the third, might be an option.
Check your calendars.
Me, too.
Who sent me to?
Bill.
Okay.
On the Thursday. You write me as not here on the fourth.
I'm always here.
We can do the third.
On the third, I'll be here.
Sure, fine.
Okay. Stat of Vegas.
Yeah.
So maybe we still have air traffic control, or is that my continuing to go back?
Okay, so this hearing is now continued. Five, one thirty. Cindy, Ms. Building.
Do I get a chance to testify?
If they're presenting new evidence, we'll have to do the questions and answers.
Only on that, though.
Okay, so I don't get a chance to testify in this hearing?
You can make a comment after all of that, yes.
And you can ask questions on any new testimony that you have.
Okay, but I just, I mean, I prepared a comment for this hearing.
She wants to get it now. You haven't closed it, so it'd be good to get it now.
Okay, if you want to do that now, do it quick before I close.
It's not very long. Well, you see, it's much of what I said in my letter. So, good afternoon. I'm Cindy Skirkrude, Chair of the Water and Natural Resources Protection Action Team of the Environmental Defenders of McHenry County. I reviewed the October 23 tree survey and technical memorandum. I see there is now an updated memo, which I did not have time to read this morning. Thank you to the ZBA for your careful consideration of this solar ray proposal, for asking for a tree survey. Defenders did not realize the site plan for this solar ray included the extensive plans for tree removal that it does. Defenders are strong proponents of clean energy, but we want to see any project be done in a manner that also protects our water and natural resources. That includes streams, wetlands, floodplains, groundwater, McHenry's sole source of drinking water, and woodlands and savannas. We do not support projects that adversely impact our county's natural resources. We do not see how this solar project has been situated to minimize the impacts to woodlands as required by Site Design Element E. We do recognize that the wetlands on the site have been avoided, but the cutting of over five hundred trees that provide wild habitat seems very unnecessary. Defenders urges ECA and the Woods Stuck Community Energy Initiative to take steps to avoid the removal of trees, especially oaks and hickories, as part of this planned solar farm. Thank you.
Thank you. We were going to continue.
Yes.
Yes, to December third, one thirty PM in this building, and we will see you then. Thank you.
Yes.
Hearing's closed.
It's good to have a lot of folks.
Yeah.
No closing.
No closing.
The meeting's over. We can win.